This evening, if you would stand and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing in an attitude of prayer, we'll have the invocation brought this evening by Councilman Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow as we pray. Father, we do thank you for this country that we pledge our allegiance to. We thank you for our freedom, and may we never forget what that freedom cost. Father, we also thank you for this city that we give our allegiance to. We pray this new year, as we go into the new year and the decisions that we have to make, that you would be with the staff and you'd be with this council, that you'd be with each of the planners and each one as we try to increase the quality of life for the citizens. Be with first responders, be with those who protect and watch over us. And Father, we just thank you. We ask that you be with us tonight and bless us in Christ's name. Amen.
First order of business is the AAA Safety Award. I'd like to pass.
It's closing up here.
Comes forward. The Police Department. I'll stand here while.
Sergeant.
Good evening. My name is Bob Hamilton, and just so everybody knows, I'm not the plumber. I'm a retired law enforcement officer myself of 33 years, so I know what your men and women in uniform go through on a daily basis. I'm now what's called a law enforcement liaison, and I work under KDOT. There's four of us across the state, and I have the northeastern part of the state from Mound City, Curtis Line, and up to the Nebraska line. So I tell my wife I kind of feel like Harold Linsley when he's always leaving going somewhere in that red Ford Country sedan. That's how I kind of feel that way with my white Ford Piquet now. But I deal with 118 agencies across the state, and your police agency is one of 30 police departments across the state that's receiving this AAA Traffic Safety Award this year. And I got to give them a good pat on the back because they went kind of from the basement to the bronze to the penthouse because this year they're receiving the Platinum Award, which is the top award that you could receive in this. I don't think a lot of people realize what your men and women in law enforcement go through on a daily basis. I was asking some of them tonight, just before I left the house. I seen on the national news that five officers were shot in Houston tonight. Don't know their condition. One suspect has been shot and killed, and there's two others still held up in the house. So I think a lot of times people take your law enforcement for granted. I know the major was laughing about it. He didn't want his picture taken because somebody might see that recognizing for writing him a ticket. Well, as Councilman Bob there knows, I'd probably be the same way because I wrote a lot of tickets in my career. So you know, whenever you're getting that ticket on the side of the road, always remember that ticket you're getting may be the one that saved your life or somebody else's life out here on the highway. Your department's receiving this award due to having a department policy requiring all employees to wear seat belts. They did clicker ticket, which is coming up again here in May. They need speed enforcement and care driving enforcement. They delivered the project graduation program to educate Bonner Springs High School students on the dangers of DUI and distracted driving because of texting and other activity. They engaged in the community National Night Out, and they deployed a radar trailer to educate on control and excess speed. So Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you ought to be congratulated for your leadership and your support of your local law enforcement. So at this time, I'd like to present Major Nicholson with the Platinum AAA Traffic Safety Award. Great point.
Well, I have to say I'd like to compliment all of you also. I've received many more compliments on our improved traffic enforcement than I have complaints. I think complaints are mostly those who have had the impact directly, and compliments are from all the people who've seen the movement. So I appreciate what you're doing. You've done great work. Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Good news in Bonner Springs. That's for the news.
I just wanted to mention that I was the one that was the one that he gave a ticket to.
Oh, okay. It did kind of come out that way. It did kind of.
I was watching your smile and trying to interpret it. Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it would be different than that, but it certainly is. People have complimented much more. Onto our city council meeting consent agenda. No, oh, no, I'm sorry. Citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. If there's anyone here that would like to stand and address the city council on items that are not on the agenda this evening, you're welcome to do that. Those items will be considered and placed with the consensus of the city council on a future agenda. Is there anyone that would like to stand and address the city council? Sounds like nope, then we'll move right along to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes this evening, the minutes of the January 14th city council meeting, claims for city operation, claims for public housing authority operation, and that's it. Anything to be pulled by the staff, citizens, questions or concerns from the council? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the amendments in January.
Consent agenda.
May I make a motion to accept a consent agenda as written?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Vote please.
Mackey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
And motion passes?
Very good. Onto our regular meeting agenda, the acceptance of the Spring Creek Bank stabilization project and approval of final payment. Staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Justine, the Mayor Director of Harvest Recreation. The project is complete, and we're super excited. We would like to recommend that the business approval is accepted as approved and ready for payments.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the Spring Creek Bank stabilization project as complete and approve final payment of $2,997.50.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here with Councilman Reeves.
On the, I noticed that what had been done there looks very good. However, I just wanted to remind staff and so forth that the north end of Spring Creek still needs some work on it. Bring that up for once in a while just to make sure it kind of stays up there in the eyes of all those that might need to work on that because there's quite a bit of bank erosion on that north end up there. They're up to the city pond where North Park is.
All right. Thank you.
Nothing additional.
Where is Spring Creek? Can somebody help me out?
It's to Ryan's Park.
Okay. Simplifying. Thank you much.
Anything else?
It comes up behind my house. They're up to, well, North Park.
Yeah. Divides there. Seeing nothing else, vote please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Very good. Onto item number two, resolution of intent for Kincaid Coach extension. Staff.
You're the local community and economic development director. This comes before you. Currently, their resolution of intent is set to expire on March 26th of this year. They still have a little bit more construction to finish up and an extension through October 14th of this year. We'll give them enough time in order to finish up that construction and issue the bonds. And our bond council is here if anyone has questions about the bond process.
Very good. Anything to add unless there's questions? Stand for questions. Very good. Seeing anything else from the citizens? No, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a resolution to amend the resolution of intent for Kincaid Coach to extend the effective date for their IRB. Do any of the exact?
Moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Question, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here. Sir?
I don't believe I have any. It's pretty cut and dry.
Is the intent still there? Continue using the building here on Front Street?
Yeah, I don't think they've changed any of that. Seeing nothing else, vote please.
Early?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Very good. Onto item number three, which is a resolution of intent of Ready Services extension.
You're the local, this one's the same intent as the last one, that their current resolution expires February 1st of this year. We're extending it, hoping to extend it to November of this year, working to get them enough time to finish up construction and get those bonds issued. We do have a representative from Ready Services here as well. If you have any questions about the project and the bond.
Very good. Anything to add unless you'd like to stand for questions?
Nope.
All right. Very good. Seeing nothing else from the citizens, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve a resolution to amend the resolution of intent for Ready Services to extend the effective date of their IRB.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here this time. I'm trying to be very fair.
Nothing. It's wonderful to see things being built in the city.
And continuing in our.
Continuing.
Yes, sir.
Being built and our continued assistance in being flexible. So that's great. I admire those that are doing the work as well as the city staff for working together to do that. Seeing nothing else, vote please.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Very good. Onto item number four, zoning ordinance amendment, BZ, I'm sorry, BSZP 128, appendices A and B. You can explain what that is, I bet.
Basically, this is just a minor change to a couple of items within our zoning ordinance to allow for auto sales and service within the C2 business district. Currently, it's in the special highway district only, which is mostly along K-32 and K-7. This would also allow it in C2, which is the heavier commercial use area. It's common to see auto sales and service in those areas, but you would still have a special use condition on that. So you could set some parameters, some conditions for that, so you don't just have them all over. And then auditoriums and exhibition halls as well, and the mixed-use district and general business districts, those are common to be seen in those districts as well, especially as you're seeing the developments grow into more of a mixed-use development instead of just standard cookie cutter retail establishments and things like that. So this will allow those two items, both as special use.
Very good.
Planning commission unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. Seeing nothing else, anything from the citizens? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance, appendices A and B. Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? Starting down here. Sir?
I was curious, would you happen to know if this affects the salvage gentleman, I don't remember what his name is, that's close to this facility? I know that he was really worried about that ordinance we passed in last January.
This doesn't affect all of that sort of land use ordinance. There's a different land use for salvage yards, and this doesn't affect that.
Okay, so he doesn't do any style of service stuff? It's only salvage and scrap? Do you know? Do you know who I'm talking about?
I remember.
Yeah, it's about, I don't know, half a mile from the fuel house facility.
This wouldn't affect, because he has that salvage piece of it. So there's several automotive categories.
Oh, he does have a designation already?
He has a land use designation on his property.
Okay, because he has asked me about it before once, and I thought he was worried about it, so I want to check.
I think he's under a different land use than.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I got.
Sir?
Does a special use permit have an expiration date or a reapplication process? How does that work?
They would apply for the special use permit through the planning commission, detailing what they plan to do within that special use permit. The planning commission reviews it and puts the conditions on it if they deem any are necessary, and then that, if approved, is good for five years with the owner and not with the land.
Thank you.
Anything else? I'm sorry. Seeing nothing else, vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Yes.
Woo-hoo, special night.
The crowd comes alive.
You need to make a speech? What are we going to do with this?
Onto item number five, purchase of two Kubota utility vehicles and a trailer. Staff.
Major Nicholson, Chris Nicholson with the Bonner Springs Police Department. Wanted to put a proposal for you into purchase two Kubota vehicles and a trailer. As you may or may not know, the police department provides emergency-related services at numerous large-scale venues within the city, both the Providence Amphitheater, Renaissance Festival, Timbloe Days, and various local festivals like Moon Marvel Days. And at the majority of those festivals, alcohol and unfortunately legal narcotics are consumed. Police personnel at these events are tasked with not only enforcement action of alcohol and drug-related violations, but also tasked with providing non-emergency and emergency services to those under the influence of drugs, alcohol, or both. And these two vehicles, there's a need currently to have reliable transportation to transport folks who are experiencing these medical emergencies and/or are under arrest for a violation. And these two vehicles that we're looking to purchase would fill that need for us at these public events.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions, concerns from the citizens?
Are you talking about tractors?
They're UTVs side-by-sides.
I was sitting here thinking with the trailer. It's not going to all.
That's a good question. Seeing nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion authorizing the purchase of two Kubota utility vehicles from Coleman Equipment and a trailer from Better Built Trailers for a total of $41,128.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here.
Yeah, I've got one on item number four. Utilize specialty vehicle as part of a teenage and adult education by providing small driving course in conjunction with fatal vision goggles at public events to demonstrate the effects of alcohol and drug impairment. Now, I'm for this, but I've got some visions in my mind here of teenagers on this vehicle. So are you going to have like a secondary brake on your side of the car or those things for, you know, somebody to ride along with them? Because I know from teaching driver reds with these big old beer goggles that the kid can't even walk five, 10 feet without falling over, and so I'm a little bit concerned about him on this. So explain some of that to us so we've got a better handle on it.
The other part of this, not only with the enforcement and transportation, but we are, we're also going to use them for educational purposes when it comes to drug and alcohol use. I know that this last year, we utilized, I believe, a golf cart at the National Night Out to kind of, and it was on the baseball field, to kind of give an experience of what it's like to drive under impairment, how hard it is to drive. With these vehicles being that they're much more powerful than a golf cart. On these Kubota is the gear shifter and also the keys within reach of the officer that would be riding in the passenger seat. These would be used in a controlled environment like a parking lot or similar situation, not anywhere near a public street. And the officer riding with the teenager would be able to turn the vehicle off or put it in neutral if they saw them getting a little wild behind the wheel. But ultimately, our goal with it is to deter them, to show them how easy it is to be impaired and not be, and to knock all the cones over as you drive, and hopefully to deter alcohol use down the road. Yes, you're correct. It would be in a controlled environment.
Yeah, and I knew it would be, but I just kind of like to have that explained a little bit, just so we know.
For the future insurance justification?
You still might consider having a brake installed on the other side or something.
I think it is a good idea to at least see if Coleman can look into something as a secondary braking mechanism. Our hope is that the officer's quick enough to turn the machine on.
I could probably give them an idea where to buy those brakes at.
Very good. Anything else?
Yeah, that's all.
Nothing.
I was so impressed as I read this. I read it several times, and I saw you doing all this stuff out there. So busy you have to be.
Yeah, we definitely are, and the current parts that we're using now could use some improvements. We're very excited to.
Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, do they have seat belts, or is that inappropriate for this machine or what?
That is a good question. I believe they do. It was the same model that we rented for Timbloe Days this year, the orange Kubota we had down there that Coleman had lent us, and I believe they did have seat belts in them. They're fully enclosed cabs as well with doors.
What happens to the golf carts that you prepare?
Those are owned by Providence Management, and so they basically loaned those to us while we're up there. So we would happily get those back to them.
Sir?
I was just going to say I'm happy to see we're supporting local business as well as since Coleman has graciously let us borrow the equipment for I don't know how many years for like what, Timbloe Days and some of the different events. I'm just happy to see that we're buying local.
Very good. Nothing else? I am excited. I think this is overdue. I hope it is, makes some of the deployment of the manpower a little bit easier. It's usually only necessary when it's about zero out like now or 150 degrees like it is at Timbloe Days. So appreciate having those enclosed or being able to have some type of climate control fan or something. Also, do you plan on having these painted similar to the way the police cars are, or will they be in Ranger?
Yeah, correct. That's actually what was our plan, is to seek the local business to paint them and then put the, paint them black and then put a wrap on the side to make them appear as a police car, and then they'll be outfitted. We have a lot of leftover lights from cars that we've downed, and so we're going to retro them.
Oh, my gosh, that's funny.
All police cars.
Are you actually serious?
Yeah, because actually at the Providence Amphitheater, to get people to move out of your way, it takes lights and almost a siren because the people stare at you.
The kids will like that too.
Please do a Drag Race fundraiser, please.
Yeah. At Timbloe Days and Moon Marvel Fest, I think it'll be something to draw people in to see the lights flashing off.
Sure. And Homecoming and National Night Out. You guys are, you guys really are involved in a lot of those events. Bonner Springs may have a population of almost 8,000 people, but it spikes to three times that on any given weekend. And to have the number of trap, the amount of traffic that goes to our town on a regular basis compared to other towns of our size, it's phenomenal. So I appreciate what you're doing. Very good. Thank you very much. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Very good. Congratulations. Onto our reports this evening, and I have to go back to my fancy. First is the city manager's report.
Thank you. Just one quick clarification. The Mother-Sun Dance, I had that mixed in my report at 6:30. That actually starts at 6:00 PM. I just want to make sure that nobody shows up a little late for the dance. Also, I just want to note that congratulations actually to both Justine as well as Matt Beetz. Both of them have been accepted, and now have gone through at least one month of courses through the Certified Public Manager Program, which is a nationally recognized program through the KU Public Management Center. Will span about the remainder of the year. They'll be equipped and some great skills as well as going through with a great cohort of individuals comprised of a lot of different agencies throughout the state of Kansas. So again, congratulations to those two as they pursue that. Also want to note that we are in the process of getting our brush truck. If you recall, there was a purchase, the council purchased a brush truck to replace the aging Hummer truck that we have to use for rushing buyers and things like that. So that is actually going to be picked up later on this week. About $150,000, $160,000 investment into our fire equipment. And also wanted to point out, this is something that came out of our capital equipment reserve program during the past budget cycle. But two little, two big trucks, I should say, the Parks Department is proceeding with getting a large dump truck at $550 and then a smaller truck in F-350, so not that much. Again, showcase of our investment into our departments as well. It's just some good practices in putting the capital equipment process in works. And then lastly, this sounds like deja vu a little bit. The city's had a long-term agreement to provide services in what's commonly referred to as the Loring Service Area. The last remnant of Loring County. But that agreement actually expired last year, if you recall. So we were out of agreement with the UG to provide those services for a few months. Some issues with that. Unfortunately, it lapsed again this year. Again, we are providing those services on behalf of the Unified Government. That is going before the Unified Government Board, I believe, on Thursday for another extension of the year. I did ask them to extend that a little bit further, given the track record of getting this accomplished as far as revamping it. They didn't. It does show an increase, CPI increase of about 2.5% over what we typically have received. Again, just to rehash, that is an agreement that establishes the city of Bonner Springs will provide services in that area for public safety, fire, EMS, police, as well as street maintenance, generally speaking, snow clearing, things like that. So that's about $130,000 approximately that we received from the Unified Government to provide those services. So I just want to keep you all apprised of that as we've had some complications in providing services there because again, we lack the jurisdictional authority to do so at this current point. And yet we hope to get that all rectified here fairly, quietly. So beyond that, other than the river court, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Very good. Onto city council items, and I think in our back and forth, we'll start down here. Sir?
With our current tax increase we've got, that we'll be doing, is there any way we can get some rough itemized list of what Wyandotte County does with our money? I know that we had like a little kid version of it, like, hey, we do fun stuff for you, and it was a bunch of fudged numbers, and it was really just kind of making fun of us. Is there any way we can actually enforce something to find out where our money goes?
You know, the Unified Government does have You know, the Unified Government does have a tool out there called Gov. that you can go on and look through how finances are directed to different places. Over the years, I think that a lot of the numbers, they've always tried to separate those things out as far as what the city is, KCK is receiving or doing versus what Wyandotte County is.
So basically all of Wyandotte except for Bonner and Edgersville?
Um...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm pissy about it because I don't like seeing nearly 40 mils go to somebody and they're like, yeah, we don't really care to tell you where it's going.
Right. And again, we've had those conversations. I would lean on, again, probably the elected representatives of the Unified Government that represent this area.
Yeah, that do nothing for us as well.
Be able to hopefully provide you with the potential. Again, their budget is available. I've gone through it as best as I can, to the extent that you are able to see some distinctions where funds are going. It's difficult.
And I appreciate your work on that. For the record, they don't respond to anything. That's my soapbox. Hop off. Thank you.
Anything else? Sir? No? You got anything, man?
138, and I wrote it down and forgot it. Barber, the three streets, 138, just north of Morse. When the road crews cleared it, for some reason, those three intersections developed a layer of ice about five inches thick.
Wow.
I think I saw residents out there with shovels. So if we can maybe send somebody back for a second pass, and I'm sure at this point it's melted, but just in case.
So is it good to do the intersection?
It's the east-west streets as they intersect 138. There's, Barber's one of them and then the two to the south. I forget which one.
See if I can interpret real quick.
Go ahead.
Is this this one or the previous?
This one.
Okay, because I know the previous one, same thing, but I think a lot of it was because there was so much drainage of water off the hillside into the ditch and when it got to the street, it was freezing.
I went, I think that's probably related, but it got really thick in those intersections. It was definitely something that needs attention.
And that could be those, you know, the...
Drainage culverts.
Yeah, the culverts need to be maybe potentially excavated, cleaned out.
Yeah.
Anything else? I think that's for me. Sir? Mr. Davis?
Yeah, just one item, I guess, that brought to my attention that city vehicles have been seen being repaired outside the city. And there may be some really good reasons for that. I don't know that, but when that's seen and brought to my attention, I think, well, you know, we've got several places in town where our equipment can be repaired, automobiles, trucks and so forth can be repaired by city people, businesses within the city as much as we possibly can.
And seconded. Just so, a lot of the work that we have done on newer trucks is usually warranty-type work. A lot of those things will actually have to be done in newer...
Yes, I understand that, but I'm talking about just, you know, you see something over at Edwardsville for instance. And, you know, unless there's a big difference in the bid on those, I would say we really ought to be using the city customers there. I understand about warranty and so forth. And I know the people that have these businesses in town appreciate that also, but, you know, just wanted to let you know.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Moving along to the mayor's moment. First off, I'd like to, I think we had an opportunity to mention this before, but compliment Major Nicholson on being appointed to the FBI Training Academy. And congratulations, and we look forward to having you represent the beautiful city of Bonner Springs.
That's a big deal.
That's great. Also, mentioning the Loring Service Area. I mentioned that here last Friday to Mayor Alvey in our breakfast meeting or round table. And he would pass that along, so I'm glad that's starting to move forward. That's been a concern for our neighbors that happen to be residents in that Loring Service Area. So we're continuing to evaluate that area and Bonner Springs is best served by continuing this interlocal agreement. So I had the pleasure of returning a proclamation with Mayor McTaggart at the Martin Luther King Day Celebration. I'd like to compliment the Martin Luther King Day Celebration Committee. They did a great job this year, as well as the wonderful people they recognize as community service award winners. Mrs. Hadley and Paul Bush were two of the adult winners. And I'm sorry, I don't have all the names of the young people that won. I bet that Tiblo Talk has all that information, so you'll be able to follow up with that. And then I have one little thing, I probably should have called you earlier, but the sign that we have on Nettleton at Shidley, the changeable letter sign or the electronic sign board or whatever, has a lot of information on it concerning the senior center and a lot concerning the recreation department, because those are probably the closest to the person that puts all that information in. But I'd, maybe perhaps if you could, on the day or two days before city council meetings, make mention of when city council meetings are and where they are going to be, and perhaps maybe also planning and zoning meetings, because those are two meetings that I really think the city could benefit by knowing when those are. Also, and maybe reaching out to, I know that Fire Department has volunteers that they try and build for the volunteer fire department. And those, sometimes they have more of an active time period that they're looking for volunteers and the meeting for the fire department might be something that would be a good thing to indicate. I don't know if the fire department, I haven't talked to them, but that's another, another thing that some people would like to know and any of the other things that are going on in the emergency services department that the public needs to know about. It's just my two cents. Other than that, unless anyone has any questions for me? Seeing none, word earned.
Oh, he just let me go.
You too, bud.
Frank County Tax Docs.
The hair does, right?
No, it looks like it, but it's not. Everything else is shrinking away.
Right? Exactly, Victor, the White County Fair Association. I really feel...
Don't know.
Networking and we introduce...
Did you happen to have any questions? You looked a little... I don't know, I was talking about the elected people.
No.
Or not perturbed, you just like looked worried about it. And I was like, I was going to answer your question or see if you had any.
No, I was letting it filter into the idea of meetings and...
Yeah.
Two individually, what is the most...
No, you were fun. I just, if you had a question...